He keeps it from asking what he is saying, what he is asking. Now everybody's got that question. I want to hear it.
He keeps it down. Yeah. 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 That's why you're there. Because that's how you dance there. Yes, you have to work right. So you're like this?
He keeps it from asking what he is saying, what he is asking. Now everybody's got that question. I want to hear it.
He keeps it down. Yeah. Yeah. That's why you're there.
You know, my cousins.
Oh, I can relate to that.
They're almost 15 years old. And they thought the last family.
He has an extraordinary, yeah, he's pretty old.
Wow. He made a story. Yeah.
The doctor's best, yeah. He's pretty old.
And he's, is he even trying out?
Yeah.
That's amazing. The only thing that I love about him.
No, he's always.
He's a, he looks like he's still working.
He's a young man, like he used to. Most churches don't have partridges anymore. So the minister has to buy them back. So they tend to leave them longer.
Well, you know where he's got a bunch of those. You got 30 of them. That's how we, Fred Vahr said, we got to come and see. So, Fred Church Church.
So you went to Long Island?
No, no, I didn't.
You went to the first church.
Yeah, they were small. But, Fred Church Church.
So there for a.
And they get there and they say.
Oh, good.
Yeah. But I also, come here.
Nina, Neil.
Yeah, how are you?
What happened?
I like your tone.
You kind of moved.
Yes, sir. I'm not proud of myself.
Actually, I don't really.
Hey, the two Andys. How are you? Good.
How are you doing, buddy?
Two Andys coming together.
Yeah.
On camera.
We'll have.
Nice to meet you.
At 3:00 or 4:00?
No.
Yeah, at 3:00 or 4:00. Hey, how you doing?
We'll have.
Well, John.
How are you? I saw that she was getting a, um, a water or something nice.
Good to see you, sir.
That's right.
Glad you're paying here tonight. Appreciate you being here.
Rain or no rain.
And the rain and everything, yeah. I'm doing okay, yeah. How much do you look wonderful?
Pretty great.
That's good. Good, good to know.
We've struggled on for a few weeks and now I'm going to see your friends.
Oh, that's good. For sex.
A little bit of that too.
Yeah. It's not like you had.
Do you know what it is?
Yeah, I don't know. Getting worn down a little bit.
Yeah, that's all. It only comes with the television.
Yeah. We'll get you up there. I'd be near the first part. I've sat here all that long. Yeah. Probably. All that fun. Get to the salad.
He has one for four. Yeah. He's not from the Met. So, uh.
I think.
We are. Uh. You're all. Breakfast. I like you.
Good.
You're good, boy. Yeah. You're heavy up there.
I'm sure you're actually. I'd be near the first part. I've sat here all that long. Yeah. You probably. Not that all that fun. It's an hour.
He has one for four. Yeah. He's not from the Met. So, uh.
I think.
Breakfast. I like you.
Good. Good. I saw that she was getting a, um, a water or something nice.
Good to see you, sir.
That's right.
Glad you're paying here tonight. Appreciate you being here.
Rain or no rain.
And the rain and everything, yeah. I'm doing okay, yeah. How much do you look wonderful?
Pretty great.
That's good. Good, good to know.
We've struggled on for a few weeks and now I'm going to see your friends.
Oh, that's good. For sex.
A little bit of that too.
Yeah. It's not like you had.
See, you're looking nice. Yeah, I know. Good to see you, sir.
I saw that she was getting a, um, a water or something nice.
Good to see you, sir.
That's right.
Glad you're paying here tonight. Appreciate you being here.
Rain or no rain.
And the rain and everything, yeah. I'm doing okay, yeah. How much do you look wonderful?
Pretty great.
That's good. Good, good to know.
We've struggled on for a few weeks and now I'm going to see your friends.
Oh, that's good. For sex.
A little bit of that too.
Yeah. It's not like you had.
See, you're looking nice. Yeah.
I saw that she was getting a, um, a water or something nice.
Good to see you, sir.
That's right.
Glad you're paying here tonight. Appreciate you being here.
Rain or no rain.
And the rain and everything, yeah. I'm doing okay, yeah. How much do you look wonderful?
Pretty great.
That's good. Good, good to know.
We've struggled on for a few weeks and now I'm going to see your friends.
Oh, that's good. For sex.
A little bit of that too.
Yeah. It's not like you had.
See, you're looking nice.
Yeah, I don't know. Getting worn down a little bit.
Yeah, that's all. It only comes with the television.
Yeah. We'll get you up there. I'd be near the first part. I've sat here all that long. Yeah. You probably. Not that all that fun. It's an hour.
He has one for four. Yeah. He's not from the Met. So, uh.
I think. I think.
We are. Yeah. It's pretty welcome.
Hi, young man. I'm so glad to see you, my son. Glad to see you. Only because I'm. I'm struggling with a piece of things. I don't kind of wear that. I love that.
I'm sorry.
How are you? You good, how are you? Good. How are you? Good. How are you? Good. Yeah. I haven't seen you in a while. Yeah. We're starting now with time not playing my game. I know. I'm glad to see you. Yeah.
You get your, you get your, um, the, uh.
You don't think so? They have baggy, don't they? Yeah. Yeah. You don't think so? They have baggy, don't they? Yeah. You don't think so? They have baggy, don't they? Yeah. You don't think so? They have baggy, don't they? Yeah. You don't think so? They have baggy, don't they? Yeah.
I love it. I love it.
See, it's the chili or soup. It was, okay. Oh, it was definitely hot. It was definitely hot, yeah. But it had some, this way, I mean, it had, I could taste 18 chilies and 12 soups. And I'm not sure if that was tasty or not, but it was.
I don't see any good, though.
We should go around and clean your pouch before you go.
We tried. We tried. It was good. It was good.
It's good for you.
Yeah.
You got it down there. 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 You got it down there.
I'm not trying as hard.
I think they, they. I don't think it was cold or warm. I don't think it was.
I don't see any good, though.
We should go around and clean your pouch before you go.
We tried. We tried. It was good. It was good.
It's good for you.
Yeah.
You got it down there. You got it down there. You got it down there. You got it down there.
I'm not trying as hard.
I think they, they. I don't think it was cold or warm. I don't think it was.
I don't see any good, though.
Yeah.
He wanted to have a car using.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody just went back. Yeah. I don't do my hands.
I've got a baggy.
I've got a baggy. Yeah. I mean, yeah. Yeah, that's good. See, you know, Rachel's just having.
Well, he's, you know, she works.
Good luck. Look. I have a little. I guess, you know, I just. We're working, we're finally, we're really, we're really. We're trying to show you. We're trying. We tried. We tried. It was good. It was good.
It's good for you.
Yeah.
You got it down there. 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 He wanted to have a car using. Oh, yeah. He was. Somebody just went back. Yeah. I don't do my hands. I've got a baggy. I've got a baggy. Yeah. I mean, yeah. Yeah, that's good. See, you know, Rachel's just having. Yeah. Well, he's, you know, she works. Good luck. Look. I have a little. I guess, you know, I just. I'm glad. I'm glad. I guess, you know, I just. 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 I'm glad. I guess, you know, I just.
Charged by ordinance with developing and administering comprehensive tree management program in Canton. And whereas, as a citizen with an interest in trees, Mr. Fowler provided fresh ideas and different perspectives to Canton Tree City Commission. Mr. Fowler could have chosen limited stagging terms, but instead served long terms providing continuity and stability to the Tree City Board. Now therefore being resolved that the mayor and council of the city hereby express appreciation to Wally Fowler for years of service on the Canton Tree City Board to the community. How long were you on there?
We didn't have a lot.
You were on there at least the whole time you were a council member, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that would be at least, what, sixteen years? At least that. Mr. Mayor, Greg. Yes.
He mentioned to me earlier this evening that there was an acorn that he planted out, and that thing is a thirty-five-foot tree now.
We all love the city. We love the city, grow from the beautiful standpoint of the environment as far as well as population, industry, and everything else. And I think the Tree City Commission has done an exemplary job of beautifying the city and keeping it affordable for us to appreciate so much. It's been a pleasure working with the city, and in any respect, I look back and have been so blessed to have had the privilege to serve in many capacities with the city. And still, I love the city, and if I can do anything volunteer, let me know. Thank you, sir. Thanks to you both for your years of service to this city. We really, really appreciate it, and exemplary of what public services about and volunteerism, I think. So, thank you both, I appreciate it. One last, someone here from Lung Cancer Awareness Month? I'm just gonna read this. No, I wasn't sure, okay. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of death in both men and women in the United States, and whereas lung cancer takes the lives of more Americans year than breast, prostate, colon, liver, and kidney cancers combined. Whereas former smokers and people who have never smoked comprise the majority of new cases of lung cancer each year, and whereas seventy percent of new lung cancer cases will be diagnosed at late stage with a fifteen percent nine-year survival rate. And whereas every lung cancer diagnosis and management protocols exist, yet have not been embraced as the standard of care. And whereas funding for lung cancer research falls short of that for other less fatal diseases. And whereas Lung Cancer Awareness Alliance is the only national nonprofit organization dedicated solely to patient support and advocacy for people living with lung cancer and those at risk for the disease. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Canton to hereby proclaim the month of November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Canton, and call upon residents to do all we can to increase awareness of lung cancer issues and offer compassion to people with lung cancer. So, we were asked to make everyone aware that this is Lung Cancer Month, and that everyone should be aware of this, so. Someone I think was supposed to be here, but we read it anyway. Now it's kind of our ten-minute public input here, we don't have anyone scheduled to speak at that point, so we'll move on into our own business. Last month, item six A, discussion of garbage service, Jeanie Hane had mentioned that, you know, she did not use the garbage service and asked for that, for relief from paying for that garbage service, and, you know, as much as I think we probably understand her situation there, I don't know how we can adjust that for an individual like that. Does anyone have any discussion about that or questions?
Well, I just have one comment. I had some other people mention this to me when we were talking about raising the senior garbage rate, there were some seniors that said it, so I think if we tried to do it for one, we would have to have some sort of blanket policy. And I don't even know how that would affect our contract with Waste Management as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Let me just make a point, Mayor. People pay for the availability of the service. The degree in which they choose to use it or not use it is up to them individually. But you are paying that rate for the consistent availability of that service. If she doesn't want to use it, that's fine, but everybody's got to pay for the availability of it to make the system work. Would it be the consensus of this body that we, the city notify her of the fact that there's not really anything we can do as part of providing relief as she had requested? Anybody have any objection to that?
No.
Okay. If you would, I guess you would be the one. Okay. All right. Item discussion of insurance premium tax. Want to discuss that issue? Well, that was kind of a hold longer from the last month, when I believe Ms. Tanner had made a recommendation it be escrowed, so to speak, and you correct me if I'm wrong, please, Ms. Tanner, but if it could be escrowed and held for operational monies for a new fire station, I believe it was what they intended. And so, further discussion, I believe it was decided that we would try to get a handle of actually some other monies that would be coming in. Was that part of that? Who put this on the agenda? Somebody did.
Thank you. Excuse me, Ms. Mayor, but I come down with something. I think it was another that I did bring up at the last meeting, and that it was referring to till this meeting to allow us to have an opportunity to discuss how much money, monies were, would be coming to us and what direction we may go with this additional revenue that comes into the city. I don't know how it would affect the budget, I think that we have already received it. And I know that there are a lot of issues flowing around this additional revenue, such as the ISO consultants could possibly use to be there to review for the five stations and whatever else. But the point in putting on this agenda was to open up dialogue to discuss from the other council members regarding how they felt that this additional six hundred could be used. It may not be appropriate to set aside this money at this particular time, and it's my understanding that some of this money is currently being used to help cover some of our debt service. Maybe what we need to look at is after the first of the year to look at where we are with this revenue and amend the budget at that particular point in time, if we need to do that. But it just, only Jim's one question.
Okay.
Is it more impact than that?
Probably not, not much, except maybe clarify the point that it's not used for debt service. We have used some of that money while we've been in the trough, so to speak, of property tax revenue collections, which one would kick in until probably at the earliest the second half of December. So this is basically our lowest revenue period for general fund purposes during the year. So I'm sure that some of that money had, in fact, I checked one of this week, some of it had been used through this little durp period, but there's nothing particularly unusual about that. Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
At the last meeting, we were throwing around the six hundred thousand. Did we throw a hard number?
Six hundred thousand appeared to be a good number.
Yes, so it would be the...
Okay.
Right. And then that would be paid back after the revenue starts coming in, so it'd be that fund back up.
See, that money, councilman, went directly into the general fund anyway, which is the only place we were authorized to put it. In fact, I think, I think I said it correctly, I think it'd go directly in there by the state anyway. I think this is a direct deposit sort of arrangement, but it would be in our general fund.
Okay.
What you, I'm sorry, what you probably want to consider is, is after the first of the year and revenue, property tax revenues kick in, then take a look at how you want to appropriate that money and amend your budget, that the annual budget to choose at first.
Yeah, I was just thinking that if that's where it was deposited into the general fund, we could anytime we want move it over to the undersigned fund balance. That way then, we're still looking at, when we signed off on the budget, we signed off on a fixed number for the budget. So it's simply about six hundred thousand that it shouldn't be. So we can take it out and put it into the undersigned fund balance, and there's payback when we start getting revenue. And then we can come up with priority this, I ask, ISO, whatever else we need, and then find those issues. So that's all I'm asking. How the state sent it to us, it's fine, I'm glad they did.
Yes. I think by leaving it where it is, that it's going to be maintained within the undersigned fund balance, what you might want to do after the first of the year, if you choose to appropriate specifically, is to, so designate it within the general fund, or to put it in reserve account.
That would require the council to make an addition, so that's fine.
Right.
It's good news.
I would tend to agree with Mr. Beresford that we should at least have that money someplace where we know it is and it remains in bulk until we've decided what to do with it, not just use it because we have it.
Okay.
This is work session, six of them.
Anyone else? How does that, how does that play into the fact that you only use it some other? Right now, it just shows that you're six hundred thousand dollar over in, you received six hundred thousand dollars in revenue that you had not budgeted, that's all it shows. Okay. If the revenues that we collect aren't what we budgeted, it would be six hundred thousand over if you didn't spend any other. That's all, that's all we've got.
It's just saving us perhaps to have a loan.
Correct.
To carry through this.
Correct. Okay. Next item, anyone else, how do you know that? It's not next item discussion design for a new fire station, I believe Mr. Wood does have some comments on that.
Yeah, the only thing I can report to you is the chief floor would not have a meeting scheduled for a week after next with the architect to design the current designs, which I understood to be what our, what the preference of council was. So, and the purpose of that meeting is to, in meeting with that architect to investigate ways that that design can be scaled back, make it more financially attainable. Goodness have you. Week after next, I can't tell you the specifics.
You will, sir. Would you let me sit in on that?
Sure.
I used to design supermarkets, and I have a background on design stuff.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you.
If you can help me remember to help you remember to get that paid in. Please go ahead.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on that, Jack?
I want to ask for a lease, it's not considered, but still considering, a lease unit, you know?
Had been discussed, you have one in Southside, certainly if you want to. I don't think that's a major cost. I hadn't talked to Chief Lance about the deployment of personnel and evaluation, because I don't think that the additional revenue is a significant cost, or down, that would be a problem. Yeah, I think that probably needs to be done. For sure. All right. Under the September financials, our new business, this might be a good time to introduce the new CFO and welcome him aboard. Nathan Ingram. Nathan stand up there. Welcome to the city. I didn't see that bow there, so.
Nathan's a graduate of North Georgia College, he comes from a, he is a CPA, he comes to us from a CPA firm that specializes in local government audits, and he currently lives in Dawson County, his wife is a homemaker, have three boys, and he has hit the ground running and has proven himself to be an immediate asset, and he's been immersed in some issues. He probably has spent quite as much of an inordinate amount of time in his prior audit experience, but he's doing a great job. Glad you're on board.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to add one comment. Just today, I was bowling in the senior league, and one of the bowlers came up to me and he said, "I have had a positive experience with the city of Canton, and it was with Mr. Ingram."
Great, absolutely. That is news, isn't it? He's joining us all here in a one, two minutes, any experience, I think. Anyone have any comments or questions about the attached September financial? Item attached information. Item B, discussion of the planning commission's recommendation, case number AX eleven oh nine dash zero zero one, Belfray LLC, Heard Road Property. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Belfray Incorporated has requested annexation of twenty-two point seven four acres along Heard Road. Public hearing was conducted, planning commission conducted that public hearing. Planning commission has recommended approval of that annexation. I'm available to answer any questions any of the city council members or mayor might have for this application.
Does that include the, yeah, the positive recommendation for zoning to CG?
That'd be the next item on the agenda, yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay. Recommended approval on that, go to the next item.
Yes, sir. Planning commission conducted a public hearing and looked at the zoning of the property along Heard Road. They did request C two zoning, planning commission did recommend approval of C two zoning. I'm available to answer any questions, mayor, council members, if you have any thoughts of that issue. We will be asking for action on both of these items in two weeks.
And that, that was General Park?
Yes, sir.
C two. Any questions?
Thank you. I remember there seemed to be some kind of caveat attached to this, like, can you just kind of explain to us and pre, turn what comes with this?
The property owners, if the mayor and council annex properties on C two, they will have the ability to place conservation easement on the property and sell some tax credit. Once that's done, then they would propose to donate all twenty-two acres to the city of Canton for city use for park, for passive recreational opportunity trails, that sort of thing.
So it would be limited to passive use, and I've had a little experience with conservation easements, they can be all over the map as far as how restrictive they are. Are you satisfied that it's unrestricted enough so we can actually use the property?
Well, Georgia state law for uniform conservation easement laws is pretty specific in what could or could not be done and meet all the requirements of state law, and I'm satisfied with what they're proposing of doing that sort of thing in regards to that conservation easement, and ultimately what mayor and council had some preliminary discussions and thoughts about the property.
Okay. Any ones?
Okay. Item D, discussion of the annual update. See, I have a five-year short-term work plan, we can't impact the program.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a requirement of the state of Georgia, Atlanta Regional Mission, because the city does have an impact fee program. We are required to do an annual update of the capital maintenance element, the comprehensive plan, five-year short-term work program, to maintain qualified local government status and be able to keep our impact fee program in place. We will propose to conduct a public hearing at the next city council meeting in two weeks and request the mayor and council approval resolution to transmit this annual update. We've made no changes from the previous capital improvements elements, items going all the way back to two thousand eight, which are changed here on each of other items, in the parks, fire, roads, that sort of thing.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Go ahead.
Mr. Patton, how are we locked into the designation under the fire department? It's identified as Station Three, Laurel Canyon, Station Four in Bluff, and then of course, the Canton Place. Are any of those names or locations, are we locked into that particular location, i.e.
Not necessarily. The reason that's included in that, that's how it was noted in previous capital improvements elements, that's how it was noted in an original master plan for provision of public services with those station numbers and those locations. But no, we would not necessarily be locked in, that that station would have to be Laurel Canyon property, or, you know, Canton Place property.
Okay, thank you. And the source of funds there is impact fees?
Yes, sir.
Are we assuming that we'll get that much, that much impact fee on meeting two for those two stations?
That the meeting two is estimated construction cost.
Oh, okay.
What the state requires us to do is give an estimated project cost, a hundred percent of that project cost would be eligible for impact fee funds.
Okay. Okay, that number is based off of the plan that we were just talking about a while ago, that was top of the line, I think, one point two?
All of these numbers have been in the record on Canton's capital improvements elements since prior to two thousand eight. These are some of the same numbers that were in the two thousand seven capital improvements elements, and all that we have done is changed the years, because we've not had enough revenue to complete a lot of the projects, so we just back it up another year.
On the, I guess, the previous page of, I guess, previous page there on the annual financial report, impact fees encumbered five hundred eighty-seven thousand for roads. What is that encumbered by?
I would have to ask Melissa Forster, the accountant. The accounting section puts together this year-end financial...
Yeah, I was thinking that might be the reservoir drive, but if that's the case at this point, it's not, it's unencumbered, is it?
Then all the dollars are listed.
Okay.
The longer, the longer it's held, the better.
Okay. Perspective could be, yeah, okay.
What page are you on, because it's three pages over. Reservoir Drive is identified...
Maybe not numbered here, so I'm just...
It's near, well, it's next, last page. Reservoir Drive is identified at five point two eight one.
I think the mayor was referencing the annual financial report for the year ending September thirtieth, two thousand eleven. Third page of this handout is still right.
So it may have been encumbered through that point and may no longer be encumbered.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I got you. Okay. Any questions, any other questions about that? Discussion of any residential plan review, item seven E?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mayor, council, recall, ISO came in and conducted a building code effectiveness grading program made earlier this year. Part of that grading is broken up into two categories, commercial and residential. On the residential portion, the city of Canton received what ISO calls an incomplete grade. The reason for that incomplete grading is because the city of Canton does not perform a residential plan review as part of its overall building permitting inspection program. They have noted some items on the commercial side that we're addressing with an action plan. We felt it important to try to put our building code of effectiveness grading at the best possible position, because this will be considered when they come in and do the ISO audit, fire, and that sort of thing. Be able to get a grade other than the incomplete, and hopefully we'll get a better rating from them for this. We're requesting mayor and council consider adopting a residential plan review program that would become effective after the first of the year. We would recommend at present time that he be charged for this. We're just trying to do something to enhance our building effectiveness grade through ISO by asking for implementation of a residential plan review.
We do residential inspections, and those inspections are to make sure that the building meets all the various building codes.
Yes, sir.
So what's to be gained by the, I can understand where you could do this today, because there's very few. There was a day, I think, sort of years ago, when, how many people would you need to be reviewing house plans for every house that's built?
It would, what generally happens in these programs is where you have track builders or a home builder is going to have, as well as like four models for subdivision, they submit one of those plans for review and approval and that sort of thing. One of the things that would help out, if you will, by having a plan review is you might be able to catch something involving a certain window that's called out in the plans that really doesn't meet code or affects a structural load-bearing wall, that that wouldn't necessarily be caught until it's actually installed with the inspection, and you might can save the builder some money in having to tear out a window because what he installed didn't meet code, is an example of where a residential plan review could provide any assistance.
Yeah, historically, let me ask you this, does your team do residential plans?
None, sir.
Who else does that you know of?
We gave you a list of some cities that we contacted around that do plan reviews.
Yeah. Anyway, if, I, I understand that, you know, certainly the need for plan review on commercial properties, I would be a little concerned about residential at this stage. I just wonder what workload, and, you know, if the market area does pick back up again, what's that workload going to be? It could be quite substantial. Of course, it might be another revenue source too, as far as that goes. But you're talking about good and free, right?
At present time, yes, sir.
Okay.
There again, we're trying to assist the city in getting better, building a code of effectiveness grade out of ISO by implementing this residential plan review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We talked about ISO for fire department. Is there a connection where because we're grading, it sits down, but the number went up, or whatever it is? What's the impact for the city having that situation? Is this something tied to similar to the fire?
This will be a portion of what they consider for the overall ISO rating. As far as how much emphasis is placed on this building code grade as far as overall ISO, I couldn't answer that question, but it would be considered as a part of that.
For example, if we build a straw house, a rating will go through the roof.
Good chance, yes, sir.
Okay. So this is important that we have structurally identified these codes.
Well, ISO will give a rating for a residential side of the building program. Right now, we've got an incomplete.
So they prefer that you look at a house both before and after construction?
Yes, sir. Actually, before, during...
Why don't you understand during inspections?
We do have a rate study here. Now, you said right now we aren't going to charge, but is this a proposed?
No, sir, that was just for information purposes for the mayor and council. We contacted numerous local governments in and around the city of Canton in regards to, and we tried to stick with municipalities instead of counties in our surveys. in our survey to see what other cities did plan reviews. And we wanted to at least let you know what kind of fees other communities charge for that.
Seems like maybe a year plus ago, we had a discussion about the plan reviews, and we were not charging enough for the man hours included against certain plans. And we said, let's bring that up to a level where we are not losing man hour dollars to review these plans. And I think we did look at other cities, and they were charging a higher rate. And I think we have to leave discuss to bring that rate up, is that correct?
We at the city of Canton did not charge for the commercial plan review, and we implemented a fee for that. We also, at the time that was implemented, increased the building permit fees because the city of Canton was towards the bottom of the fees that were all of the local governments around us were charging.
So, yes, we did.
Yes.
That's right, yes.
Ken, the criteria we're going to use if we implement this, is there a, are you proposing just go by state minimum codes? Or will it be anything enhanced?
No, sir, all that we enforce over the city of Canton is a state adopted code.
How much time do you think it would take to review a set of house plans without a code?
Twenty-four hundred square foot house would probably be thirty minutes. You use a standard ICC checklist. And it's structural issues, Mayor, is the main thing it looks like. Probably eight to twelve structural issues.
On residential?
Yes, but on the commercial, it was running longer.
Yes, sir.
And we did have some commercial buildings, tiny hotels, et cetera. And you did spend quite a bit of time.
We have a set of school plans we'll spend two weeks on down there for a, for a thirty million dollar new school.
Right.
At the, in the heyday, how many residential plans would you, residential permits would be issued in a month's time?
When things were at the fastest pace of the city of Canton position, over a hundred permits a month for new residential construction.
So that's fifty hours a month.
Is, is, Mr. Patton said, Mayor, with the track builders, you were reviewing one time. ICC is happy with that. If the track builder gives you a statement saying, I'm building a plan, eleven oh one, that you have already reviewed. Unless it was a variation, a structural variation, extra garage or something, it would be a rubber stamp approval on that. And, and IASO was good with that. That was one of the things I questioned of them, that we have to look at the same house a hundred times if they build it in the subdivision, so.
Okay, thank you, that's good. Anyone else?
We're at three fifty, just in case you didn't know, we're at three fifty per thousand on residential comparing to that. Three dollars and fifty cents. We did get our numbers, didn't get on the charge, so.
Okay. Any others on that issue? Okay, discussion of the annual renewal agreement, Cherokee Office of Economic Development.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, the city of Canton has been participating with Office of Economic Development in a call share with that GIS Zoom Prospector software that's available through Economic Development website. There's a direct link to the city of Canton's website. This has been an ongoing project, the joint participation with Cherokee County, City of Canton, Woodstock, Holly Springs, that's part of funding for this service. City of Canton's website with this GIS Zoom Prospector does have more hits than any of the other government websites. This was budgeted for FY twelve, and we do have money in the budget for this agreement.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to try.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ken. City managers reporting.
Certainly proud of the progress our staff has been making and addressing and resolving some of our water sewer bidding issues that have been discussed previously. Nancy Clackem has been hired as a contract employee. She's doing a good job for us downstairs, and that's been a very helpful move for us. The INCODE staff has made some changes which will enable our future statements to display the actual metering and service states, and those displays will be included in the next and all future bidding cycles. That should eliminate some of the confusion which has existed. INCODE staff will be here in our offices next week to continue to monitor and refine our system. The consultant that we mentioned to you last week, the procedures and operations consultant, was in our office today, and we'll continue to rely on that person's expertise as long as it's beneficial to us. And we're continuing to be as responsive as we can in resolving one-on-one any issues that are brought our attention, such as Mr. Rush just mentioned a little bit earlier. We certainly want our billings to reflect accurate usage and rate calculations and our commitmentness for every city of Canton water and sewer statement to be correct. And we will remain dedicated to achieving and maintaining that goal.
I just want, I just want to say to Mr. Wood and his staff that I've been working with them on this issue, has had really put a lot of effort forward. On it, they've been there. Kim is lined up now to really spearhead the INCODE process. And I think we are looking at the light at the end of the tunnel. And I just want to say, appreciate the hard effort there.
You kind of say that, I should have said this, I, I think our staff certainly appreciates the patience and support of council. I think we have felt that encouragement, felt that support, and so thank you, each one of y'all for that.
Okay. Is there anything else coming for the council? No. Is there a motion, Mr. Ken? And a motion, and a second, and discussion, not those first things, but I'm saying that?